The clock's at 6:30. It's time to begin this council meeting in the City of Harrison tonight, August 8th, 2013. Mr. Clerk, would you call a roll, please?
Jason Briscoe.
Present.
Joe Cox.
Present.
Dan Sherrill.
Present.
Johnny Savage.
Present.
Dan Roberts.
Present.
Rick Griffin.
Present.
Dana Taylor.
Present.
Wayne Cowell.
Present.
This time, if you would stand, master hearing, would you leave us some prayer, please?
My praise is heavily, Father. We thank you for your blessings on our city. We pray that you give us guidance and wisdom and direction as we do business. Once again, Lord, give these men and women wisdom. As James 1:5 says, "If we just ask of you, you'll give it to us." In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Praise believers. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
We've, um, no, we did not. I'm sorry. I overlooked that. Uh, we will have to catch up minutes next.
At this time, I'd take a motion that we bypass the approval of last month's minutes at December.
Second.
Have a motion second in discussion. Not all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. On your agenda tonight, uh, next thing we'll do is go into department reports. And as always, unless you've got some questions for the department heads, uh, unless they've got something specific that they want to talk to us about, uh, we go to police department.
I don't have anything.
Public works. His is coming later. Fire.
Be later.
Okay. Accounting.
Yes, sir.
Parks isn't here. And housing isn't here. Yeah, at this time, we will go into our committee reports. Community, environment services and welfare. Finance committee.
No report.
Internal affairs.
No report.
Public safety.
No report.
Public works and transportation.
No report.
Resources and policy, uh, but we will have some work on that here in just a minute. Next in the agenda is ordinance and resolution. And the first one under the ordinance is the third and final reading of the amended sewer ordinance. And at this time, uh, I need a motion to place this ordinance on its third and final reading by Title Lonely.
I make motion putting on this ordinance on the third and final reading.
Second.
Have a motion and second to place this ordinance on its final and third, a third and final reading. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Mr. Attorney.
An ordinance amending ordinance number 1151 of the Harrison City Code, Section 10.08.05, use of public sewer and for other purposes. Whereas code section, you want me to read?
You just kind of, okay.
It wasn't in the motion, but if you got it that way, it's okay.
Well, that's what I did. And, uh, we need to adopt this now. Need a motion to adopt.
I move for adoption.
Second.
Second.
Have a motion for adoption, second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion passes. Next on the agenda is a new one that's been added to us just the last few days here. And, uh, I want to ask Wade to stand up top for a minute. Uh, we wouldn't be able to let him do too much talking tonight, but Wade, if you will, stand up and explain to everybody why we're adding him to this ordinance.
I'll be quick. Uh, we have had to recently terminate our contract with the, uh, the company that's been doing the cemetery maintenance. They weren't meeting the contractual obligations, so we got to, we had to go ahead and terminate that, that relationship. We are out to bid right now for the 22nd this month for the next round, uh, but we need to try and maintain the cemeteries between now and then. We've got enough people we can throw at it to, there's various departments, we're all sort of taking shifts up there, but we don't have enough equipment. Mr. Hensley owns an excavation company and a make, and a lawn type maintenance company. He actually used to have a contract in the past, uh, so we need somebody that we could quickly lease a little bit of mowing equipment from. And so that's, that's why we're asking to add him on there.
Okay. And, uh, and as he said, the reason we need to add Mr. Hensley, uh, onto the ordinance itself is because Mr. Hensley is a city employee.
Employee.
And for us to use a city employee, we have to have their name in this ordinance. Okay? Thank you, Wade.
Is he going to be down the mowing or is he just furnishing equipment?
He's just furnishing. It's just a couple of hours. We need a couple of extra hours for a few bags. All, all kinds of things.
Do I hear a motion to place this ordinance on its first reading?
Should I move that we place this ordinance on its first reading?
By Title Lonely.
By Title Lonely.
My second.
Okay, a motion and a second to place this ordinance on its first reading by Title Lonely. Mr. Attorney.
An ordinance authorizing a certain city employee to contract with the city.
We need this, go ahead and go through, don't we? Okay, at this time, I would introduce a motion that we suspend the rules and place it on its second and third reading, uh, tonight.
By Title Lonely.
By Title Lonely. I make motion if we suspend the rules and put it on the second and third reading and suspend, and, uh, by Title Lonely, right?
My second.
Have a motion and a second to place this ordinance on its second and third reading by Title Lonely. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Mr. Attorney.
An ordinance authorizing a certain city employee to contract with the city. Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt.
Someone have a second.
Motion and second to adopt. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Do we need to pass an emergency call soon?
Uh, we're in a 30-days situation, I think. Uh, okay.
Okay. Alrighty. Now, under new business on the agenda, in front of you, I hope you have a list of the City of Harrison, the council, septic change, septic charge for sewer, a mass charge to the customers. You'll see one figure and then you'll say, see everything else. I'm gonna let Wade talk about that and discuss this, or Luke discuss this and tell us what's happening here.
Okay, uh, these are the people who we found out were on septic and we had been charging sewer. Um, as the only, as far back as I can go is 2004. That's the only, that's as far back as our system will let us go. Um, and that is what you see there. And the two years is what we had given other people prior to, I guess, testing in, uh, for this big July 1st deadline. Um, so that's what you will see there on the column on the left. Everything else is beyond the two years. So that is in addition to the two years. If you would so choose to, uh, pay all the way back, however, I will warn you if you decide to do that, uh, it is possible that we could have people who have been paid for only two years come back and say, well, I want the rest of it as well. Um, I don't know how many people that would be. Um, it, I'd have to, I mean, it would probably just have to be a, whenever they came to me, I'd have to either say yes, no. Um, but again, this is one of the reasons we came back. And also, you know, this will let me know what I can do going forward. Um, is it written in the ordinance now that if they come back, that we don't pay them anything? Or how does that work?
I thought it was written in the ordinance, but this should be a technical.
Okay. I mean, I just want to make sure that's, that we're all still in agreement on that and, I mean, if it's ordinance, yeah, but.
Is this 99.643 in addition to the 44 cents?
That would be in addition. So the total would be 14.5, close to. Uh, however, that number could increase if other people come back and say, hey, I want my money too.
So the decision we need to make tonight will be either to go with, uh, as Luke has presented here, a two-year payout on the one that's been paying their sewer bill on the water bill that's actually been on septic, or are we gonna extend it above and beyond that two-year period?
And that'll cause this other $4,400 to be addressed again on the.
Well, the $4,400 is what it would cost us with what's came forward at this time.
It'll be the additional 99.64 plus if anybody else comes back and says they want more.
Well, I, it's already figured out here for two years. I would just start with that two years.
I agree. But that's what we've already paid.
No.
No.
That's why he's already paid out, but these are the ones we have not paid.
If we agree to go back to two years, that's what we pay. It's 44.65, 43. I believe two years should be adequate for everybody, in my opinion.
You make that motion.
Yeah, I make a motion that we pay back for two years.
I will second that, too.
You have a motion and a second that we go back two years on the paybacks on the customers who have been charged for sewer, who were actually on septic. Are there any discussion?
Can I ask a question on that? Are we allowed to up here on the reimbursement?
It's up to you.
For even on sewer, or we're not allowed to discuss that?
You go ahead and stand.
I talked with Joe about it, and he was talking about you guys possibly talking about having a two-year reimbursement, but I've been paying for 15 years. That's why I was kind of wondering about that.
Go ahead and stand up and tell us your name.
Robert Gomez.
Okay, you're on this list here, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Go ahead.
I heard him saying, talking about the two-year reimbursement thing. I don't think you had stated that we need to apply by July was the cutoff, I guess, to submit for reimbursement for the overpayment. So they said maybe somebody might come back and try to say they wanted reimbursement if they gave to the people you already have on the list, which is, I've heard, seven, 10, 14 people.
Uh, Luke's familiar with that nutmeg.
No, it's actually, that's what we had done in the past before the end of July 1 deadline. We had had people come forward in the past.
Does she have a two-year cap on the reimbursement?
Yes.
Prior to?
Prior to.
Cause there wasn't, I didn't, from what I understood, you were just, they were reimbursing for what was overpaid.
No. That, anytime that had happened before this July 1 deadline, and I guess, whenever we had put this out there, like, you know, what had happened last year, we would have only reimbursed them for two years, and that's what our policy was.
Cause when we bought our home, I had told the city that we were on sewer, on septic, and they had told us we were on sewer, but when we bought the house, it said it on that we had septic, but they never checked it till recently in April, I guess, when you guys came out and checked it, then we were for sure that we were on sewer. But that's why I was feeling I wanted to be reimbursed and not just for two years.
Fine, man.
You'll hit.
Um, I had talked to Mr. Gómez, and he had indicated that, uh, he had told us he was on, uh, septic whenever he first bought the home. Again, I cannot prove that. He very well could have, and I, you know, don't doubt his word. Uh, that usually at that point in time, we send someone out to check if it would have been for me, and I, again, I can't speak for who it was in the past, uh, but we would normally send someone out to check if they're on sewer at that point in time, and then we take them, that we would have taken them off. Again, I can't speak for what happened back 15 years ago, or whatever it was that you purchased your home, uh, but that would have been our policy that I would have had and.
I've also checked what it costs to hook up to the city sewers. If we were to sell the property, I'm sure the new owners would want to be on sewer, which we, if we'd have known we were on septic, we would have probably had the sewer connected because we had the yard fenced also before we bought the house. So I imagine if we sell the property, they're gonna want it to be put on sewer, and I've checked to have what it costs to have it connected, it's a little, of close to $3,000.
Go ahead.
If anyone is interested in what would probably happen in a courtroom or in, in matter of law, if someone were to take this matter, I believe there would be a three-year statute of limitations on any claim, even if it were for 15 years, there is a responsibility on the owner to come to the city and say, look, you're charging me and, uh, I'm not on the system. So, uh, you know, cutting it off at two years is an option, but even if someone went to court, I believe they would be limited to three years.
And I wasn't gonna ask for 15 years. Actually, what I was gonna say, I would ask for 10 and then donate to the city the other five, basically, for my part and help in the community, maybe, but not bankrupting the city. That's all I just wanted to say.
Okay. Thank you, Reverend.
Thank you.
Uh, we have a motion on the floor and a second to have a payback of two years on the customers who've already paid for it. Are there any further discussion? Not all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion passes unanimously. So the next, the item on the new business agenda is increasing the finance director salary. And I will let you, uh, Dan, discuss what we did in committee on that.
This was a commitment made at the time Mr. Bergman was hired, and it was announced we passed in committee that we increase his salary to that amount, same as the previous finance director was paid, which was $65,000. And with that, I would make the motion that we do increase his pay to $65,000. My second.
Have a motion and a second to increase the financial director salary. Uh, do we have any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion passes. The next item on the new business is, uh, reference the fire department donating a car to the Bergman Police Department. Uh, Chief, I will let you stand up and talk about this one.
Okay. Uh, I was approached a couple of weeks ago from the police chief out at Bergman. Uh, he had seen our training cars, what it was. It was an, actually, it's been around the block. It was a police car at one time. It was in sewer for a couple of years, I believe, and they donated it to us to be used for a travel car back and forth to Camden. Uh, it's first year we bought an additional stack vehicle, so it's kind of sitting there. It does have some damage on the quarter panel and the door where it was in an accident. Uh, he, and I told him, you know, it was just gonna sit there for auction, and he was interested to see if the city would donate that to him as, as is, with that damage and everything. I told him I'd bring it to you all, but you all just had what you thought about it.
Okay, you've heard the explanation for this item of new business. What's the council's wishes?
No, we usually do, uh, have sealed bids for something such as this. I mean, the city absolutely is financially stretched anyway. If the car brings $500 or $1,000 in auction, that's money that goes into the city general fund. Uh, I mean, that's just, I'm just thinking out loud.
I can, I can speak a little bit to that. In the past, we have donated old police cars to other law enforcement agencies. We, here a couple of years ago, we decided to start charging $500 a car. Uh, but in the past, of course, the cars that we're giving them don't, didn't have any fighting damage on it, but in the past, there have been cars that have been donated to other law enforcement agencies in the year, old, old used cars.
The legal approach to this matter is, is that the City of Harrison and any first-class city is permitted to donate things to other nonprofit-type municipalities, uh, which the City of Bergman would be. So it is legal for you to do this. We're not permitted to give things away, except we are permitted to donate to, say, other towns. Uh, so, as far as the bidding process, if you decide to donate, there is no requirement of bid. If you decide to not donate the vehicle, then it's gonna be kept in the, I guess, in the fleet, so to speak, until the next auction that we would have.
Yes.
Pat, is that why you said?
Yeah, it was worn out when we gave it to Walker. Yeah, if we, the, on the stuff we donate, after folks we donate it to, the municipality, department, whatever, when they get through with it, do they sell it or do they give it back? Isn't there, didn't there used to be a law on the, they gave it back to the people that give it to them? I mean, even though it's trash, probably, whenever that happens?
Well, I don't think that would apply to something as depreciable as an old police car. Uh, a gift can be made that says, if you get through with it and aren't using it, then give it back to us. It's kind of what we call a reverter clause, but I don't know. I mean, you could make that a condition of the gift, if they give it back to you when they stop using it, whatever condition it's in.
I mean, that old car may not be worth anything. I don't know. But cities, well, that was, we're having money problems now. The more you give away, the less we got. I mean, if it'll run, I don't know. That's, that's why I was just bringing that up for discussion.
What's the council's wishes?
I would move we give them the car.
Have a motion to donate the car to the Bergman Police Department. I hear second.
My second.
Do you have a motion and a second, or any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion passes. The next item on the agenda, as you know, that, uh, at Senior Center down here, we had some thievery and our air conditioning unit was taken, and we are gonna have to replace that, and you want to speak on that, Wade?
Um, yes. The lowest price on the quotes that we received for it was for $1,715 from, of our refrigeration. And so we're just, we're asking for an increase to the buildings and grounds budget in that amount. That way, we're not putting us behind halfway through the year. We still need to.
Did I understand that the persons that are in custody now for the others have been charged with this?
We filed affidavits on them.
Does our insurance or city's insurance, does it pay anything on that?
That was my question. We got a higher deductible up in there.
Okay.
And actually, what we will be doing, we will be approving the expenditure of the $1,714.12, and then come December, when we amend the budget, that will, figure will be amended into the budget at that time. So that's what we'll be doing. But we will need a motion to do it.
I would move that, um, we take care of that expense, increase their budget by that amount. My second.
Have a motion second to allow the city to replace this air conditioning unit and amend the budget, $1,714.12. Are there any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion passes. Okay, the next thing, I'm gonna turn over to Dan on the next three items. The first one will be Necessity Road Closure Update.
Okay, Necessity Avenue is the alley, so to speak, behind the front retail store of Miller Hardware. Uh, Miller Hardware, of course, is the only one that really accesses that for themselves and for their customers, and they requested this after their building fire, I guess, occurred back in March or so earlier this year. Uh, I have obtained all of the documents from a couple of people that live or live, that have businesses to the east of the Miller Hardware set of buildings. They have approved it. Uh, of course, we're gonna leave it open on the east end for them to access, but Miller Hardware would close off, put a gate on the west end of their property to close that off. Vandalism and other things, I assume, are the issue there. The, um, the matter requires a public hearing. Anytime that we're going to vacate or close, whether it's an alley or a street, we have to have a public hearing. I have attempted, since I have the documents already, I have attempted for the last couple of months to schedule a public hearing, but each time we did, we got into variations on our meetings. I have to run a newspaper notice for a couple of weeks prior to getting that, uh, public hearing. So I will be pretty soon working with Patrick to get this public hearing, probably at the beginning of either our committee meetings or next month's meeting, uh, to get that matter, at least, the public hearing out of the way, and then I can put it on, we can put it on the agenda and deal with the council voting up or down to approve the closing of that Necessity Avenue or Necessity Alley, whichever you want to call it. On the second matter there that I have, Honeysuckle Lane Road Dedication Update, that one's a pretty good project. Patrick has kind of been after me a time or two to see how my progress is on that. It's, it's a problem in the western portion of Harrison, uh, city. That involves a street that looks like an alley, but it's paved and it's accessed to several properties. Uh, we're attempting to get enough signatures from the property owners so that we can declare that street a public street. Somewhere along the way, it got developed in that area without anyone plating the street and without dedicating it to the city. Uh, if I can get permission, there is one holdout yet that I still feel I have some hope that we can talk them into it. If I can't get that approval, and it does take unanimous approval for me to make that a public street, then I'll have no choice but to put that into the circuit court and kind of do a cram down on that. But, uh, how long will it take me to get that done? Uh, I really can't commit and say because I'm still going to put a lot of effort into getting that done without going to the court cost, and anytime you do a cram down on somebody, uh, we're, of course, doing that to one of our citizens, but I still have hope that we'll be able to get that without putting it in the court, but, uh, at some point in time, I would take it to circuit court. Hoops and Home Runs Update, uh, even just this afternoon, I had a visit with Philip Wilson, who owns the Hoops and Home Runs property. We had a court date for him to come in next week to arrange for paying $3,000 in back fines that we assessed him, uh, late last year. Uh, he has already paid $600 or $700 of the court cost. He does tell me, and I've been told this several times over the last two or three years, that he has a bank approval for financing to do some roofing and to tear down the west one-third of that property. And generally, I have no choice but to go along with, with his attempts to do that. If the city attempts any kind of condemnation or cram down on him, we're gonna spend probably $100,000 of city money on private property just to, I guess, make that property look better. Uh, so it's, at least until you direct me differently, I'm going to stay after him. Mark has been, the fire department has been after him for fire and safety issues. We continually inspect him. We continually stay after him. Uh, it's just one of those problems that it takes money to clean that property up. And Mr. Wilson, I hope we'll find that one of these plans, one of these banks, one of these contractors will come through and do what he keeps promising. But aside from that, we're going to stay after him, citing him for clean premises violation, citing him for safety and fire code violations, and I guess, continue to be a thorn in his side until we get some results out there. But, uh, if you want to do so. But if you want to do something different, then you're going to have to dedicate a lot of money, a lot of city money, and whether you can recover that back at any time, I don't know yet. So, it's one of those deals, we'll have to wait and see, unless you want to take a different approach.
Okay, you've heard Mr. Jonas's explanation on these three items. Do you have any questions of him on any one of the three? If not, I think Mr. Jonas needs to go ahead and let Patrick on scheduling the public hearing, and probably as soon as we could do it now would be just prior to the next month's council meeting, and I think that'd be a good time to do that. And the rest of it, we'll just let Mr. Jonas take care of what he's doing and go ahead and do what he's doing on that. Next item on the agenda is a discussion on the paternal order, or paternal order of police benefit usage adjustment. And Johnny, since you're above public safety, I'm going to let you make a decision whether you want to discuss this or take this to committee.
Did, was somebody going to check with Little Rock on that?
We've, we've got paperwork, that's why I think it needs to go to committee and to be discussed.
Take it back to committee, our next committee meeting.
Okay, you'll have to make a motion for that.
I'll make a motion, then we'll take it to our next committee meeting.
Okay, motion second to take this FOP agenda to the next committee meeting, which will be next Thursday night. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. All right, now then, you got your watch ready? Wade will, Wade will discuss the next several items on the agenda for now, that being the industrial road upgrade, paving the shooting range, drug task force office roof, and water loss prevention and all that.
Fire chief started this morning.
No.
It's signed. Industrial park road upgrade was just from committee whenever we had discussed the bids received and getting a formal council approval to move forward with the, moving that contract and entering into a contract with Dean Kraus. I don't think there was any additional information that we were looking for. I just, either a concurrence involved, it's, it's in the red book, it's in the budget, but it is going to be more than what the red book had allocated as we've discussed, so.
Does anybody on the council have any questions of Wade in reference to this upgrade on industrial park?
On the paving the shooting range, a police department approached me, asked me to put together a cost estimate on what it would take to repave the shooting range out there. It is, the pavement's in pretty bad shape. You've already gone through a seal at least once, and that's already failing. Based off of our current asphalt prices that we have right now, that, to pave that would cost approximately $14,000. That is an item that the chief does not have budgeted. We just wanted to bring it to your attention, see if that was something that we could entertain this year, or if we need to look, trying to do it at a later time. I don't see asphalt prices going down, but I could be wrong. Market's pretty volatile, so we could very well get a better price next year, or it could be, we could see another 40% jump, like we did from last year this year.
Again, I think there's something we could take to committee next week. I need a motion.
I'll make a motion that we discuss this in committee.
Second.
A motion second to discuss paving the shooting range at next committee meeting. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. And now, the drug task force office roof?
Right, which, what is the name of that building? I was incorrect in what it's called.
What do we call that?
Narcotics office?
Yeah.
The narcotics office, I was close. That roof has been leaking for some time. Multiple repairs have been attempted over the years. We've gone through, gotten quotes on what it would take to replace that roof. Lowest quote was from a company called Townland Roofing, in the amount of $6,350.0.
I do need to add, simply put this on the agenda, we also have windows that are falling out over there, that are rotting out. Some of the windows are falling in. We use that building for narcotics officers, but we also use the building to store old records, and we have an evidence lab and different things in there, and that, I mean, it's just a tear garden. Back years ago, Frank was going to fix the windows, but I don't guess I ever got done. And we just need to fix the building so it doesn't fall down under the earth.
What's address on it?
I don't know. Three, we buy the fairgrounds. Name's three.
It's on, oh, Wing Gate, I think, Wing Gate, I think's the name.
Two buildings over there, one of them, audience office is in.
Watergate, yeah, it's on Watergate Lane.
I'll make a motion that we take this to the next committee meeting.
My second.
Okay, have a motion and a second to take this to committee meeting next week. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Now, go ahead.
On the water loss audit, the office expenditure is a little premature. I don't really have an expenditure to ask authorization for that. We are out to, we have an RFP published, and we will be receiving proposals from multiple companies next week to do a, it's not necessarily a water loss audit, it's a, it's a water, a leak survey for the system. So, I don't really have any information to report on that. If that's okay with you, I'll go ahead and jump and quickly get through our water loss prevention program, because we're going to be implementing that public work.
Go ahead, Wade.
As I've, we've talked about in previous meetings, we did have a water loss problem in the city of Harrison. It's a, so, which is a significant revenue problem for our utility. So, we've, I've worked with the department head, we've looked at what other cities have done, what the American Water Works Association recommends, just different things that have helped other cities tackle this problem, because it's not unique to the city of Harrison. So, I'll do a very brief presentation on what we're going to be doing. And ultimately, our goal is to reduce our water loss. It sounds really simple. I mean, it's simple to come up with what our goal is. It's not that simple to get there. Just a quick overview, I've had a lot of questions about, about this problem. People ask me, have you found your leak? Well, it's not, it's not a leak, you know? When we deal with a water loss problem, water loss is broken down into two different types of losses, and it's important to understand what they are as we move forward with our program. Apparent losses are unauthorized consumption, which is theft, meters that aren't reading right, or just data handling errors in our building. The reason those are called apparent losses is the water's not really being lost, it's getting used for something, it's not leaking out into the ground. Real losses are actual leaks, and there's lots of places it can leak. It can leak on our transmission lines, it can leak on the service lines between our lines and the meter, which is still our problem, and tanks can leak, you can have tank overflows. So, we get to what, what is our water loss? Right now, the best number I can offer is 40%. I don't think we're losing 40%, but the way we've been tracking our water usage and non-metered usage, right now, this is the best number I can offer. That's, that's a horrible number. It's not the worst I've heard of, but it's really not good. When did water loss begin? It started as soon as we started selling water in the city of Harrison. That's one thing I want people to understand, this is not something that happened six months ago, five years ago, 10 years ago. This has been a progressive problem for 40 years, and it only gets worse until you start trying to fix it. And I know a lot of people ask, well, why is the city not care? Well, I don't, I don't think it's that the city didn't care in the past. As with everything, it tends to boil down to money. Traditionally, the way it was looked at was, we paid this much money for our water, and we sold this much in dollars, and as long as that was not upside down, we must be doing pretty good. I look at it more as gallons. This is how many gallons we get, this is how many gallons we sell. I look at it less from the dollars, but more from the product. Also, it costs money to fix this problem. I know the Water and Sewer Fund has, in the past, run thin, done well at times too, and we've got a lot of other problems we need to fix. So, really, a lot of why, it sort of keep, it's just something that gets kicked down the road because of money, for various different reasons. So, is it really that bad? Yes. But really, you know, if we had started tackling this 20 years ago, I wonder what our water and sewer reserve would look like. I wonder what types of projects we would have been able to do in infrastructure if we didn't have to pull so much of that into water and sewer. So, that's why this is really important to tackle. At the same time, it's not that bad, because now that we know, we can start fixing it. I think, I think all of you can appreciate the importance of moving forward with trying to fix this problem. So, what we want to do is, we've got basically immediate steps, intermediate steps, and long-term steps in order to tackle this problem. Immediate steps, and I break everything down into threes on this, it keeps it a little bit simpler. First off, we're going to follow the water. What that means is, we're going to, we're going to have an improved water accounting. We're going to track all of our water on a monthly basis. Now, we talked a little bit about this in committee, and I've talked to the other department heads, all of my supervisors, it requires buy-in and cooperation from everybody, because everybody in the city uses water. Most of the departments in some way use water that doesn't get used. They need to report that too, so that we know it gets used. The same with the rural fire departments. We want them to report it to us, not, because we want to send them the bill, we just want to know where it goes. And one thing that's really important about doing this is it gives us a regular feedback on everything else we're doing, on whether we're doing a good job or not. Next step is to locate the leaks. Now, this is where we've got an RFP out, RFP out right now for companies to submit proposals to come in and do a comprehensive leak survey. We're talking about 150 miles of pipeline. It's going to, it's going to take a little bit. Most of these larger companies that are accustomed to doing this could probably come in and do this in about two to three months. So, that's good. The best thing about that is, it will identify, we'll end up with a list that says, this is where your leaks are, these are your worst ones, so we can prioritize which ones we start fixing. We will be getting those proposals in on August 15th. I'll just hand out a brief summary at that, at the committee meeting, just so you can see what the, what the prices were. This is not necessarily a low bid proposal. There's a significant amount of qualifications involved in it, so all I'll be handing out at the committee meeting is a summary of what it is. We will actually have to do a lot of follow-up and see who's the best qualified in addition to who offers the best price. Increase our billing accuracy. Five to 15% of what we're looking at, of that 40%, could be lost through meters not reading accurately. We replaced about 2,200 of our meters last year with new meters that are highly accurate. They maintain their accuracy, and they're guaranteed to maintain their accuracy for 20 years. And we're replacing meters that are 30 years old. The one at my house was, got replaced in that program, and it was, I think, 28 years old. Those old types of meters, they're supposed to be replaced after 10 to 15 years. So, we're losing a lot through meters that aren't meter, reading accurately. Now, to go ahead and do the rest, just to give you a little idea of what the cost, that 2,200 meters, that cost half a million dollars to do. You're looking at probably 1.5 to 2 million to do the rest of the system. Coming up with that money can be difficult. That is why we are looking at, if you recall, a while back, we had a presentation on performance contracting. We are looking at rolling that into performance contracting. We're nearing completion of the feasibility study, and we'll present that information to you. And just to refresh your memory, that's where the ESCO, the Energy Services Company, they assume the risk. What they will do on meters is, they will guarantee an increase in billing based off of the meter replacement. If that increase in billing is not met, they're on the hook for the shortfall. So, that's one reason why I want to go that route, and we can talk about that a little bit more as we go forward there, or have a feasibility study and have more information to give you. The intermediate steps, once we complete the leak survey, we need to fix the leaks. Now, we'll start working on them as soon as we know where some are. They'll be giving those reports as they go through this two to three month process. So, we'll be, we'll be going in behind and working on leaks, but we have no idea how many there could be. There could be 500 leaks out there. It's going to take us a while to fix that. So, what we'll do is, we'll prioritize and we'll just start plugging away at it. Depending on how bad it is, we may have to pull in some contractors to help us. We'll just have to make that decision when we see how many leaks we have and how bad they are. I'll, I'm pretty much going to skip over this. This is, this is a step that helps move us towards being able to implement a, a proper meter maintenance program, which we've never had here. It's just, it's database and GIS information, keeping everything to where we can get to it real easily. Also, another step, and this is something that I've already started on, is to completely overhaul our construction specifications and details for water and sewer. We're about 80% done with the specs, about halfway done with the details. Our current standard is from the early 80s. It still includes clay pipe, asbestos cement, materials that just aren't used enough, we don't need to be using anymore. We obviously don't allow it, but they are in our specs, so we need to get all that cleaned up. The long-term steps, which really are the most important, we need to maintain our meters. We need to implement a meter maintenance program where we have regular scheduled replacement, regular scheduled testing, inspections, to where we follow them, so that in 30 years, the city's not back in the same position with 7,000-plus meters, that the vast majority of them are old and not working very well. That's, this is a long-term goal, because it's going to take a while to put that in place, and it's, it's just a continuous program. We need to start treating the water itself like money and not just looking at the financials. What we're going to do is, we're going to do an annual water audit based off of IWA, which is the International Water Association, and the AWWA, which is the American Water Works Association. We will do that every year, we will report that to council. It will quantify what the financial impact is of, of our water loss. This is not something I want to do, because it is a, not a fun process. It's several pages of little fill-in-the-blank forms where you've got to collect tons of data and goes through it, but we're going to do it so that we can report to the council what the real financial impact of our loss is. And then, the last and most important thing is to stay the course. Just because we reach a goal doesn't mean we're done. Water loss, we don't get that point where we say, all right, we've done it, now we can move on to other things. We're always going to be fighting it. This is a permanent culture change on how we've done things in the water department. And then, you know, as we meet goals, we look at what we're doing, we change our goals, we try and improve it. There's a lot of other measures out there that can be taken, pressure management, district metered areas, infrastructure rehabilitation renewal. We do a lot of that right now, but we're targeting groundwater in, in low-pressure areas. This is more targeting lines that we know are going to be water loss problems in the future. So, all of that brings us back to our goals, and I've set some, I guess, some benchmarks. So all of that brings us back to our goals, and I've set some, I guess, some benchmarks. Get that 40% number to less than 30% in two years. Less than the 20% in five years. Now, less than 20% is an acceptable number for a water system of our age. The long-term goal that we keep, that we need to keep fighting to get down to is between 10 and 15%. That's a, that's a good number. Springdale Water Utilities is usually about a 12 to 14%. The best one I've ever heard of was Las Vegas is at 5%, which you can imagine how much they treasure their water out there. So those are our goals, and that's the benchmarks out there. Hopefully, we can beat those. I really would like to beat that 30% in two years. I would like to be better than that, but I realistically don't know if we can do that. And that's, that's the end of it. Hopefully, I didn't take too terribly long. I'll answer any questions if you have them.
Any questions of Wade? Thank you, Wade.
Thank you. That 40% loss, what does that amount to in dollars?
As far as water purchased, that is close to a year's time. Luke and I had discussed that, and I cannot think of a number. $600,000? In water purchase, yes. Now, the double-edged sword of that is, if that, whatever amount is in poor metering, we're getting hit twice because we're not able to charge for sewer. So, but just the, yeah, at least 600.
I was thinking that the number you gave was approximately, based on what you had, was about $600,000 a year, right?
Yeah, I think that's what we had talked about.
That's what it said in the newspaper, $620,000.
Next item on the agenda is reference a water rate increase. Luke, do you know anything about this one?
Other than, we were just going to discuss, didn't know much about that increase.
Okay, go ahead, Patrick.
The mayor proposed that because of all the extensive costs that are going to be for the wastewater treatment plant in the future, that because it's a utility, that doing a water increase that'll offset that, those future costs might be a good idea. And that also to implement a water commission, a separate force to manage.
Again, I think this is something that we need to discuss in committee before we bring it into council.
Make a motion that we spend this committee and discuss it before we make any decisions.
Have a motion and a second. All right, any discussion? If not, we'll also discuss this in the next committee. All in favor say aye. All opposed, like signs. Okay, that's the end of the new business on the agenda, the mayor's comments. I want to handle this way. Patrick, has he left any comments with you to be made tonight for him? Okay. Citizens' comments. Anybody in the audience like to say anything? Go ahead.
Dave Thompson with Boone County Department for it. I would basically just like to request a, an audience or whatever with the Harrison Finance Committee and the finance management. You know, it's, basically, I'd like to make that request, and if you want to know more, I'll tell you more, but, you know, it's just up to y'all.
You're allowed to do that, Dave, at committee meetings. If you want to come next week to committee meeting, we'll leave it open for you.
What time is it?
Six thirty.
Six thirty what day?
Thursday, week from tonight.
Okay, and I will, maybe it would be good to get with the finance manager to kind of fill him in on the context of this out of the.
That will be Dan.
Okay, okay. Might try to talk to him a little bit after the meeting, if that'd be all right, whatever it's y'all, but.
Dan and Luke, I should say.
Okay. Just so y'all know what's up and that way before you get into committee.
All right, Dave. Anybody else in the audience? Motion to adjourn? All in favor, get up and leave.